So everybody getting to their seats. We'll take on item 4.0, Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance will be led by the sisters Geraldine Castaneda and Morrell Castaneda, 11th and 12th grade students from CK McLatchy High School. Are they here?
Yeah, they're back there. Talked to them earlier.
Come on down.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, stay there. Member Hanson.
Good evening. Thanks for being with us and thanks for leading us in the pledge.
Have a good one.
Good. So I've got a little something to read here. The Castaneda sisters from CK McLatchy High School have been leaders in our Summer of Service program for four consecutive years. These sisters have been great role models for other students and the community. Morrell Castaneda is an incoming senior at McLatchy. She has been a Summer Service Ambassador for both her middle school and high school. She is a student in the HISP program, which is the Humanities and International Studies program, and has been highly involved with many campus activities. She's been in the school orchestra and the swim team for the past three years. Morrell has plans to attend the very prestigious St. Mary's College in Moraga after graduation in 2016. Congratulations. Geraldine Castaneda is an incoming junior at McLatchy High School. She has also been a Summer of Service Ambassador for the past two years, and she was also the freshman class vice president and is now the incoming junior class vice president. Like her sister, she is a student in the HISP program. She is president of the CKM Make-A-Wish Club, a member of the California Scholarship Foundation, and volunteers with St. John's Women's Shelter. Geraldine excels at track and field and has already broken two school records. That's great. She has also been on the tennis and cross country team for the past three years. And we just fixed your tennis courts this summer, so they're going to be even nicer when you go back. Just so you know, we've worked on that. The Castaneda sisters have been exceptional contributors to their school and our district through both their academics and year-round service. The Board of Education is proud to recognize both Morrell and Geraldine as our stellar students. Congratulations.
The microphone is yours.
I'd just like to say thank you for having us and choosing us. We didn't get to see our managers today, but we thank them for all the guidance and advice they gave us, and they really helped us out throughout the whole process, and thanks to them that we were able to inspire other kids and learn to be leaders ourselves. So, thank you.
You can tell us who you are?
Oh, I'm Morrell Castaneda.
There you go.
I'm the other sister Geraldine, the incoming junior. And also, again, we'd like to thank you guys for having us and our SOS program managers for nominating us and for having us here. It was through SOS that we started kind of getting involved and started doing other activities and kind of branching out into other things, and I think that kind of helped us pick every, all the different things we wanted to be involved in, rather than just stay in our little closed circle. So that was a good opportunity for us, and we thank them and you guys. Thank you.
Who are you going to call?
Oh, me? Right now, I'm planning UC Davis. I want to go into neuroscience. So UC Davis, I know, has a really good program for that. That's what I'm looking forward to right now. Thank you.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption with the exception of technical problems on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and the AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Sunday, August 23rd at 9:00 a.m., Monday, August 24th at noon, and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Members of the audience wishing to address the board should fill out a speaker identification form located in the back of the community room and give it to Chief Communications Officer, Mr. Ross, prior to the conclusions, to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items not listed on the agenda. If you are found to be commenting on an item that is on the agenda, you will be asked to defer your item until it comes up on the agenda. Please turn off all cell phones or place them in the silent or vibrant mode.
Thank you. Item 6.0, excuse me, item 5.0, Announcement of Action Taken in Closed Session.
Yes, Mr. President. To one announcement out of closed session. By six votes in favor, with Board Member Rodriguez abstaining, the board ratified a compromise and release agreement in OAH case number 2015-060943, a special education matter. That concludes my announcement out of closed session, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Item 6.0, Agenda Adoption. I have a motion to move the agenda. Do I have a second? I have a second by, actually, it sounds like everybody, so. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 7.0, Public Comment. Mr. Ross.
We have three comments on item 7.0 from Liz Guillen, Nikki Malevsky, and Jonathan Tran.
Good evening, Superintendent Banda and Board members. I'm Liz Guillen with Public Advocates. We are a nonprofit civil rights law firm, and we work with community organizations to partner with them to help make the laws that we work on real. As you know, we've been working very closely with organizations here in SAC City Unified, and I wanted to reference that we wrote a letter to Superintendent Banda and Chief Business Officer Gerardo Castillo on August 17, and the letter contains concerns that we have about the amount of funding from supplemental and concentration funding from the local control funding formula, and that it does not meet, or did not meet, the district's obligation for 2014-15 based on what the 15-16 formula looked like. Now, that information was gleaned from meetings that we had at the board's Budget Oversight Committee meeting, as well as meetings with Mr. Castillo. The letter was signed by, I'm sorry, oh, the letter was signed by organizations here, Public Advocates, HIP, among innovating politics, Sacramento Act, and the Black Parallel School Board, and Making Sense Work. I urge you and request tonight that you agendize on September 3rd the issue of the LCAP so that the resolution of this can be discussed, because I anticipate that it will be resolved by then. We have heard by email from the superintendent and Mr. Castillo that a reply will be coming shortly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, evening, President Wu and members of the Board of Education. My name is Jonathan Tran, organizer of among innovating politics. I think about three or four years ago, I think many of folks at the DIAS were at the state capitol at a time when the state legislature was trying to decide on some of the most devastating cuts to education finance in recent memory. So it feels very uncautious that the district is leaving money at the table, particularly for students that need those resources the most. To follow up on Ms. Guillen's comments regarding the available LCFF dollars that have not been spent on students that need them the most, that includes low-income English learners, foster children, students that are bringing in to the district additional resources. So based on the numbers that have been presented, both by the district in terms of the numbers that we've crunched, that means that there's $14 million left currently unspent in regard to the populations that need them the most. I think it creates an opportunity where the community really wants to follow up and have that dialogue as LCFF moves forward. I know last year, we had that whole conversation about, okay, well, it's the first year, we'll do trial and error, figure it out. But this is the second year of LCFF implementation. I think we should have learned the lessons from that first year, and unfortunately, we 've come, we've reached a situation where the students that are bringing in the most dollars here in Sacramento City Unified are not receiving the resources that they need. So hopefully, the board will have that conversation with community members, bring parents into the conversation, and let's make sure that we spend those dollars on the students that need them the most.
Thank you, Mr. Tran.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Banda and Nikki Malevsky, President of the Sacramento City Teachers Association. So here we are, fewer than two weeks before the first day of the school year, the first in memory that starts before Labor Day. As always, the new school year ushers in the opportunity for growth, improvement, and constructive change. In fact, our ability to work with the district on a new pre-Labor Day calendar and the discussions to come regarding the possibility of even bigger changes in 1617 is indicative of the opportunities for constructive change. As we in SCTA look forward to our work with the district in 2015-16, two major priorities come to the forefront. First, taking very concrete steps to make SAC City a destination district by significantly reducing the class sizes among, along with providing quality support. And second, by ramping up our efforts to recruit and retain the best educators in the area who are reflective of our diverse student population. Teaching in classrooms where the numbers of students are more manageable is also a great recruitment tool, especially as we move into a more competitive marketplace for recruiting and retaining teachers, a hot topic that has finally began to gather national focus due to a recent article in the New York Times. Our ability to accomplish our goals requires re-establishing trust with district leadership. While significant steps were taken through the efforts to resolve the health plan changes issues, even today, not all of those issues are resolved, despite clear and unambiguous and enforceable contract language. Trust is more difficult to achieve when agreements, especially those that are in writing, are not followed. Abiding by written agreements does not in and of itself lead to a different, excuse me, developing a deeper level of trust. But in the context of labor relations, it is a precondition, and it is difficult to move past when one party can't be expected and readily yet trusted to abide by what is agreed to. But it is our hope that these issues will be resolved quickly and amicably, paving the way for us to focus on our priorities and to truly work together making SAC City a destination district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Malevsky. Item 8.0, Consent Agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda? A motion from Vice President Pritchett. Do I have a second?
I'm sorry.
Second by second, Vice President Hanson. All those in favor signify.
I apologize. We received one additional card on 7.0. From Ray Green.
Okay. X me.
They say better ladies than never, right?
Apologies.
Honors, Daru Wu, and those on the board and the committee today. I first want to start off by thanking for giving me the opportunity to speak and to share with you some of the pains that we feel in the after-school. First off, my name is Ray Green. I am a site coordinator with the Roberts Family Development Center that you hear so much about, Freedom School to be exact. But I also represent amongst other after-school programs as an advocate for our community. What I would like to discuss today is that I had the opportunity and was afforded an honor to serve on the LCAP Committee Advisory Board, and in agreement with those who came earlier, the $14 million that was left on the table is shocking to me, and I would just like to say that the Roberts Family Development Center is a program that has shown success and is a program that has shown the mission and the value that we at the district say we have by meeting the needs of our students, who are low-income English-language learners and who are foster youth. With that said, I would like us to imagine actually, actually meeting the need of our students, not looking at summer as a distant or something separate from the learning process of students, and as a district fund the development going here and forward, funding those who support us, which is the youth services. I don't think that they get any of the services or the funds that we've got, and Roberts Family Development Center would like a part in that in leading the way as a quality program by receiving those funds so that we can be fully funded during the summers, because we all know that during the summer, learning does not stop. And I would like us as a district and being blessed with the opportunity to make decisions that you have all been chosen to, if we can unite in that and making that change happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Okay, I have, moving back to item 8.0, Consent Agenda. I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item 9.0, 9.1, Approve the Submission of a Credential Waiver, Application of the, to the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing for Two ROTC. Ms. McNair.
Good evening, Board President Wu, members of the board, Superintendent Banda. Agenda item 9.1 is for the submission of two credential waiver applications to the Commission on Teacher Credentialing for the Completion of Staff Development Certificate, otherwise known as an English Language Authorization. Staff recommendation is to approve these credential waivers for Mr. Ryan Peterson and Mr. Stephen Painter, newly hired ROTC teachers at Hiram Johnson High School. All credential teachers must have an English Language Authorization, and the request for waiver for these two ROTC teachers who have just been hired to fill these hard-to-fill difficult positions will enable these teachers to be, to teachers in these difficult positions to have the opportunity to remain there and continue their work with students.
Thank you. Any public comment? Any discussion? This is a conference to action item, so I'm going to move from conference to action with my colleague's approval. Do you have a motion? I have a motion from Vice President Pritchett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Arroyo. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. This is now an action item. I'll take a motion to approve. A motion to approve by Vice President Pritchett. Second by Member Arroyo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Counsel. Item 9.2, Monthly Facilities Update. Ms. Allen. Mr. Dobson? Yeah, I saw Ms. Allen earlier.
You cut your hair.
It's her anniversary tonight, so she's having dinner with her husband. So thank you, President Wu. As I said, Kathy is not available, so I'll be presenting the item tonight. Thank you, Ann. Tonight. Okay, there we go. So tonight, we'll review our project center construction, the core academic renovation projects that are being developed, and review our construction projects website. Our first highlight tonight is Albert Einstein. In 2014, they received a Project Green Award. Project consisted of irrigation enhancements and the creation of seating, additional seating and walkways, and that project is currently wrapping up. Next is Cal Middle. We're expanding the gymnasium at Cal Middle. Here we have some progress photos showing the framing and concrete, and we anticipate this project to be completed prior to November. Isadora Cooden is completing a deferred maintenance paving project. On the left is a before photo, and in the right is a photo during the construction, and that project is wrapping up as well. Carolyn Wenzel Elementary, we've just completed a deferred maintenance paving crack fill and seal coat project for that school. At Fernbake and Middle School, we're wrapping up a paving and irrigation project. Believe that was an ERP project. And New Technology is receiving a new cool roof. Not only will the new roof protect the building, but also conserve energy by reflecting heat in the summer. So you can see the completed site, the new white roof. Parkway Elementary, we're replacing asphalt. At Leotata Floyd, we addressed storm drain issues in the courtyard, and we were able to create a more aesthetically pleasing courtyard. Here you'll see some new tree wells and decomposed granite walkways so the students can traverse the courtyard there. At Sacramento High School, we're completing a paving project. This is their east parking lot, which was behind the front of the school. Also, we are repairing the pool and replacing some concrete in the front of the school that was lifting and creating some tripping hazards. Now into our core academic renovation repair, we're continuing to develop these projects. Staff toured black box theaters at Folsom and Cordova School Districts to get ideas on improving the CK McLatchy Visual and Arts Program. Staff at Kit Carson are continuing to meet to develop concepts and ideas for their improvements. Conceptual plans will be shared back, shared at back-to-school night at both CK McLatchy and at Kit Carson, and we will kick off the process at West Campus once the new principal is in place and we get school underway. And I just want to remind everyone that our new and improved construction project link is up, and we're posting pictures and project updates to the site as we progress through the various construction projects. And then last but not least, we've completed the interviews for Real Estate Advisory Services. The Reconvenant Firm is reviewing the contract, and we hope to have that item before the board on September 3rd. After contract award, the Venger will be attending an ad hoc facilities committee to further identify the scope. That's all we have to present tonight. If there are any questions.
Member Rodriguez.
Thank you, President Wu. So one question you're going to be able to answer, and the second one you're not.
Okay.
Just let you know. On the Parkway Elementary School, is that work going to be completed by the time school starts? Because I notice it's in the main play area.
The last I've ever received, the area should be accessible to the students. There may be what we call still some punch list items. The contractors would come back after school hours or on the weekends to do the final repairs, but it's our intent to have it up and running for school.
What are punch list items?
So punch list items are items that maybe some slight deficiencies that aren't quite up to our standard. When we do an inspection with the architect, district staff, and the inspector, we identify those, we create a list, and those are given to the contractor, and then they're required to address those.
Okay, so the project's going to not look like bare dirt. It's going to be...
No.
Okay, thank you. The other question that I have is on the Real Estate Advisory Services. It was my understanding that I was supposed to be included and contacted to be part of the interviews, part of that process, and I haven't, and I'm very disappointed.
Member Hanson.
Member Rodriguez, we'd be happy to, if there's any facilities you'd like to see on the list, it's a draft list, so you can just let me or the superintendent know, and we'll make sure they go on the list to be considered.
For the consulting?
I wasn't aware that there was some special outreach that was supposed to happen beyond what we've already discussed in the previous meetings the last several months.
The Real Estate Advisory Services for the contract.
Correct.
I was supposed to be included on that bid process.
News to me.
You'll have to review tapes because it was publicly stated.
Okay, I had a question for you. I'm curious, as we're looking at a disposal or, you know, reuse of some different properties that we have, I was touring a school, Cabrillo, and the yard that they have in the back is just gigantic. So, and I know we have some really large acreage for some of our schools, I think that there's some opportunity there to look at some potential different uses of some places where, and I was talking to the principal, she said the yard's so large, she doesn't even allow the children to go all the way back. By the time recess was over, a kid could barely reach the other side if they were running full speed, a kindergartner, so I think that there's a lot of space and on some of the fields that we should look at. I'm wondering, is there a requirement that schools have to have a certain amount of acreage, depending if, you know, number of students, or if they're elementary or middle school or high school?
There are guidelines. They're not specifically requirements.
Okay. That was really my only question, but we can address that.
Okay.
Member Cochran.
Thank you for your report.
You're welcome.
I really like the website, and I'm wondering now that I believe the intern has departed.
Yes.
How are you managing to update that?
Well, now that he's got it up, it will be easier for our staff to keep it maintained, so that's, that's the game plan.
Okay. A specific question, and if you don't have the immediate answer, I've already talked to Superintendent Bend about this and the ongoing HVAC problem at Sutter Middle School. Do you have some information on that?
I do not.
Okay. Maybe you can shoot me an email just where it is in the queue, that type of thing. Thank you.
Member Ryan.
I don't have any questions. I do have two comments. First, I want to share that, you know, in the midst of the Leonardo da Vinci renovation that was going on, and in particular, the restructuring of the roof, there were several concerns articulated by community members about construction occurring before hours, before agreed-upon hours, and noise. And I just wanted to thank facilities for being responsive to that. As soon as I got those concerns from the community, I contacted you, and I was told that the next day, that stopped, and that consistently through the end of the project, expectations had been met. So thank you. And then on the other point, I just want to acknowledge with the Fruit Ridge Collaborative and the opening of that space as a community hub, there has been a tremendous amount of time and energy dedicated to working with our community partners to make sure that that facility is safe, that as needs arise, those needs are being addressed. And so I want to thank the facility staff as well for what I know has been a larger undertaking than you had originally anticipated, but much is to the benefit of our community.
Thank you, Member Ryan. Vice President Pritchett.
Thank you, President Wu. First off, I just want to recognize that we have a former student board member in our audience, Asami Seido. Would you like to stand? And welcome back. We'd love to have you. And just a couple, I have just a couple things for you, Jim. First off, when, I've had a couple schools just kind of say things to me as I'm out visiting. as I'm out visiting them about certain things that they would like to have fixed to kind of give their schools just a facelift. So that way, they look well when the kids come back to school. Is that something that we should just shoot you an email and say, is this a way to get on like a quick strike project? Or is there not? That's a no-go?
And maybe to expedite it if they would submit a work order.
I know that there's a process.
At least it's placed in the system. And then you can contact Kathy about that. And then she can discuss what we might have available to do something like that.
Okay, great. And then my next thing is mainly for Member Rodriguez. I did not know that you had asked about being on that committee for the Real Estate Advisory. But I wanted to let you know that I did sit on that committee. And I'd be more than happy to sit with you and go over everything that we went over.
Member Rodriguez.
Thank you, President Wu, again. And thank you, Member Pritchett, for your offer. But I believe that would be a violation of the Brown Act if you were to sit with me and talk to me, since that's an item we have to vote on. So I'm afraid that that can't happen. Because we have to vote on approving that real estate advisor contract as a board. Yes, we do. So and I would appreciate some diversity that we have when we deal with items of facilities. I mean, if I'm dealing with an item on my budget committee, I'm not going to only keep it within our budget committee. It should be a diverse process. And people should all, we should be tapped into for other different types of processes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dobson.
Thank you.
Item 9.3, Superintendent reporting comments for the new school year.
Opening of the school year. Before I do that, though, I do want to acknowledge someone who came into our district at the start of last year, about the same time I did, and really established herself as someone who brought a lot of expertise and experience and being able to work with our charter schools. And the reason I bring it up is not only has she been able to support the school district in working with the charters and making sure that we had some real positive relationships, but also accountability. I mention it because tonight, or today, was her last day, official day here. She'll be leaving our district, leaving our good town, leaving our wonderful state, and moving elsewhere. And that person is Sue Lee. So I think we all owe her a hand for just a wonderful job. I mean, true dedication to show up for the last board meeting as well for her. So I just want to also highlight that. And Sue, I hope I don't mess this up too badly. But I had a little coaching on this. Pai jiang de kha la. And so what that means is have a safe trip and please come back when you can. So we wish you well on your new journey, your new adventure. And we welcome you back anytime to come and visit and help us out. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then moving on to the opening of schools, construction projects. You know, Jim highlighted some of the projects. We would be here all night if we really were to highlight everything that we've done. I was out at Hiram Johnson last week, able to see with the extensive work that was done there. Every little thing helps. In this case, there was some tremendous amount of blacktop work that was done, cement work. You know, there's places where it's such an old school, the cement had been raised and created some real dangerous situations and unsafe situations for students. So those were torn out and redone. I know it had the Jim Dunn last year, paving, cement work. But it's one of those that at some point, you know... And we have a lot of schools that have high needs. But that's one that I'm really going to champion to make sure that we continue to provide not only just the facility support, but supports in other areas as well. So thank you, Jim. Thank you, Kathy and staff, everyone, Barry, everyone that has a part in this in not only planning these projects, but making sure they get done in a timely fashion. Board members raised the whole point of, are these going to be done before kids come? And that was really the whole point. We have a small window to get those done. And you guys and the contractors, the architects, everybody do a spectacular... They do a spectacular job of getting that done. So as you know, school starts on Thursday, September 3rd, two weeks from today. Our principals, our assistant principals, office staff, and in some cases, our teachers have already returned and are working hard to prepare for that first day. Last week, we provided our site leadership teams with five days of professional development, held here at the Serna Center. In alignment with our whole child approach to education, much of the professional learning was focused on equity and common core line curriculum and instruction. We also held several days of boot camp type training for new administrators that provided them with much more information and support that they'll need to make sure that they hit the ground running and have a smooth start to the school year. So I actually had a chance to meet, when I was meeting with Jerry Behrens this morning, to review the agenda. I actually ran across a group of our new administrators that were sitting at the same cafe. And they were sitting with Nancy Purcell. And she was walking them through a lot of the things that they'll have to be prepared to do the first day of school. So it's really good to see that kind of support early on. Our central office staff updated site leaders on our ongoing work in the areas of family and community engagement, communications, health services, youth development, special education, and facilities. In addition, nutrition services, transportation, maintenance, budget development, and student support services, and much, much more. So we have a lot that we have to be prepared to do at the start of the new school year. To celebrate our first day of the school year, our family and community engagement staff is ramping up our annual Sacramento Goes Back to School campaign. Family and community engagement worked closely with principals to ensure that our first day is welcoming and fun and really special for the children and the parents that we serve here in Sacramento. A lot of kids and parents have butterflies in their stomachs on that first day. So we want to do everything we can to assure them that everything is going to be just fine. In some cases, the parents need more assurance than the students. As part of this work, we'll be holding a red carpet celebration at Hollywood Park Elementary School before, on the first day of school, on September 3rd. This is our annual event where we get the message out to our community that our teachers and our staff are excited for the upcoming year and committed to providing a high quality education for each and every one of our students. Our partners in the Hollywood Park PTA are working with us to make sure that our families feel like superstars. Hollywood Park isn't the only school that's planning and welcoming activities. All of our schools have something special planned for that first day. District leadership, including area superintendents and cabinet members, will be visiting every school on the first day to help with the transition for the back to school. You know, I still get asked sometimes, what is our job when we go there? And I said, hey, I've been on some of these first day of schools where I get to direct traffic. I get to hand out forums. I get to help out in the office. So whatever we can do to support the schools on that first day, we'll be doing. Our board members are welcome to join us at the schools as well. And I think some of them are already committed to be there. If you come to Hollywood Park, you can have your picture taken by the paparazzi. So make sure that you make that a special attempt. And if you tweet your photo, please use the hashtag SACgoesback. Got that, easy to remember. Looking ahead to the 2015-16 school year, we will continue to push forward our goal of providing seamless, everyday instruction that is aligned to common core standards. We need to make sure that every student in every classroom is challenged to use high order thinking skills with every lesson. We're also expanding our work with balanced literacy, which is our workshop approach to reading and writing. So a lot of the common core, the S-PAC testing, is on writing. So a big emphasis for us in the last few years has been to focus on not just the reading part, but the writing part as well. This year, we'll also focus on our English language development for our English language learners. We've heard from our community, we've heard from board members, about the importance of this. Not that it's never been important, but we're putting an extra focus on it this year. Our Director of Multilingual Literacy will be working with stakeholders to develop a new EL master plan that'll guide this work into the future. The goal here is to shift language development away from the old model, which is separate, isolated portion of the day, to where the model is incorporated into all of our content areas. So language development will be in the instruction itself. Another big bucket for us is our work with equity funding. For that work was allocated through our local control and accountability plan, which we hear so much about. Our community supports this work and understands that through equal access and opportunity, we will move the needle for each and every one of our students. This year, we will also launch our strategic planning process. We'll be making a comprehensive report to the board about the strategic plan development in the next month. The strategic plan will be aligned with the LCAP process and will be actually covering, you know, the same topics, same goals. But we want to make sure that there's clear alignment so that the resources support the work of the strategic plan as well. It's our statement of our values and goals that will drive our work over the next five years. Finally, this year, we'll be taking a look at operational policies and procedures. We need to standardize our practices that we function more like a school district instead of a district of schools. To that end, we'll be focusing on customer service, responsiveness to our community, consistency of practice, and building systemic excellence and operational excellence throughout the school year. Our families and our employees and our families deserve the highest level of service. And that's what we'll be aiming for. In closing, I think we are all ready to get a new school year underway. We're very anxious for that. Even after three decades in public education, the first day of school remains an exciting day for me as well, even going back to when I was a child. We have a lot of work to do in the upcoming year. It's hard work, but it's also rewarding type of work that... The most rewarding type of work that there is in supporting our students and our families. We are ready for whatever challenges await us. And I'm confident that we will accomplish all these goals and any future goals that we establish that get us the student outcomes that we desire. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent.
We have one public comment on this item from LaShania Brazil.
Good evening, board members. LaShania Brazil, representing the Black Parallel School Board. Just wanted to bring up a few items to you. Good evening to you all. I just want to continue to convey the partnering with the Black Parallel School Board and also addressing the disproportion of Black students suspended for willful defiance. Remember, that number is at 55% of all students across the district. And that's a large number. So we eventually want that number to go away and find, like I said, strategic progressive strategies for that to work out for our Black students. And then focus on providing more targeted after school early preventions for African descent. Hopefully, we can get that done soon. Because I think if we just focus on just getting early prevention versus waiting till it's out of hand, then we can have closure to that as well. And then I want to bring up Freedom Schools. The Roberts Founding Development Center were at three sites this year, Leotata, Edward Campbell, and Phoenix Schools. And it was a, and Phoenix Park, thank you, and Phoenix Park. And it was a success. Last year, they went to CDF and they said to them, we'll give you 160. And they met that goal. CDF came to them this year and said, we want 450. And guess what? They met that goal as well. So we may want to consider using some of the local control funding to fund the successful program for future. I think you were there, Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Yes, at Leotata. Yes, and it was a success. So we may want to consider just using your local control funding for that so it can be a continued success for Freedom Schools. Thank you, LaShania Brazil, with the Black Parallel School Board.
Thank you. Now, was at Phoenix Park.
You was at Phoenix. Thank you, guys.
Member Rodriguez.
Actually, this question is for our public commenter, LaShonda.
Miss...
...with children and husband, I'm sorry.
Maybe from the Freedom Schools Roberts family, too. Last year, we had a presentation come forward from those who were participating in the program and the Freedom Schools. Is that going to be arranged again this year? Or how can we help you come again so we can see that?
You gonna make that happen?
Gonna make that happen?
Gonna make that happen, Ray, Tony, LaShania? Presentation, come on.
Go up here.
Camera can't see you back there.
We can't hear you back there either. We want your voice on camera. We all want to hear you.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Well, last year, we had a presentation here from those who participated in the Freedom Schools. I think it was Leotata Floyd. So we're going to be graced by that again.
Say the time and the date that we will be here. It's not something that just ended in the summer. It's transitional throughout all of our programs. So the kids are ready. If you're ready, we're ready.
Okay, so President Wu, can I request an item on the agenda?
Who may.
And then, yeah, do we have a form here? We have a form. So can we get your email? And then we'll email you a form. And then you guys pick a date and the time that is appropriate for you?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We're getting pure cream. Member Ryan.
I had an opportunity to visit two of the Freedom School sites and was incredibly impressed and frankly moved by how impactful it was for students in our community. And I will tell you, one of the things that was most impressive to me was the literature that was being used to promote early literacy and a lifelong love of reading culturally relevant literature, many books that I had never seen before, but that obviously the students were just eating up and hungry for more. So I requested of the Freedom School staff a list of all of the literature that had been used in the curriculum for Freedom Schools. And that was provided to me. And I'm really happy to say that I'm working with my community in Oak Park on a master plan for a little free library project that would pop up throughout the community where we will be using some of those incredible books that you brought to us in Freedom Schools to really disseminate with students throughout our community.
Have you received the integrated reading curriculum that's common core aligned as well?
I have not received that, no. I would love to get that, too. That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to 9.4, update of 2015 board committees and committee assignments and an addition of new committees. I just recently received, I think it was this yesterday, from Member Arroyo, the list of committees. We have some committees already established. Budget Review Committee chaired by Member Rodriguez. We have the Governance Ad hoc or Policy Committee. We have the Facilities Committee. And then we have some recommendations for additional committees. I'm not in any position to select committee members for those committees, but I would like to have a little dialogue about the committees. And the three recommended committees are a Board Technology Committee and Governance Ad hoc Committee and a Communications Committee. So I don't, I believe at least two of these recommendations came from Member Cochran. So would you like to take a few moments to share with us what your thoughts are for each of those committees that you're recommending?
Happy to. First off, I'd like to address Technology Committee under the direction of the superintendent. And on general knowledge of the difficulty of the task, I'd like to withdraw that as a proposed committee for this board session until I work with Elliot a little bit more to find out information about what we need and how best a board committee or ad hoc or standing can address the issue. The other committee, the Communication Committee, provides a wonderful opportunity for board members to act in a manner as if we are on a bully pulpit and give strength to our existing PR, public relations, and communications efforts from the district. There are many board members who would like to participate in this, give guidance, but not do the job of our very talented employees here at the district and work on things like marketing, bringing forward our programs here at SAC City so the public is fully aware of the many great things that we do to help ADA and increase the population in this great district. Right now, our staff is strapped. We are working at a bare minimum. We need to communicate these issues. And this Communication Committee would be designed to help, not hinder, but to help that process.
Thank you. Any question, Member Ryan?
I strongly support Member Cochran's suggestion that we establish a Communications Committee. And I'm very interested in serving on that committee. You know, I take to heart the comments of Nikki Molesky. And I think the truth of the matter is, if we are going to make Sacramento City Unified School District a destination district, we have to be able to tell... district, we have to be able to tell our story, to brand the district in a positive way, and frankly, to figure out a way to up our communications game so that we are attracting families back to Sacramento City Unified. And I think we have a talented team that is understaffed, and that we're hoping that this committee can help to shape the dialogue, to allow board members to be better ambassadors for the district, but to also expand much-needed capacity.
Member Coch, no, is it, oh, Member Cochran?
Thank you for recognizing me again. I get a little worked up about this, and you'll have to apologize, I have to apologize to you, but you know, nobody likes to hear good news on the television. And our current staff does a great job when we have difficulties or problems, or they need to explain something that's happening, so it can be in a form that the public can digest. But what we need is a step further. As Member Ryan said, we need to communicate what we do. I can get very tired of hearing about problems in this district brought forth in the press. Sometimes there are some excellent things written, but we really need to drill down, get marketing out there, because this district deserves to increase its ADA, and we need to bring students back to this district to give them a quality education. Let's not have an exodus to other districts, to private schools. Let's make this the best district we can, keep doing what we're doing, and let people know who we are and what we do.
Thank you. Member Rodriguez.
Thank you. I love that Member Cochran is worked up about this, yes. And I really appreciate the proposal to have a Communications Committee, and the vision around it is to attract families to come back. However, just because we put the news out there that come back to our district doesn't mean that we have the programmatic, you know, excellence that we desire. So it is a good segue into that. I'd like to talk about the Academic Achievement Committee, so that not only are we getting the good word out there that we are doing phenomenal things here with Sac City, but we also show that we're doing wonderful things for our students who are in great need. With that, I'd like to propose a slight correction to this committee's purpose, and it's very minor. So if everyone's following along, it would start off with, "The primary goal of the committee is to address issues and recommend action to the school board, which will improve student achievement for all students at all levels." And then striking out many of the words that says many of the topics to be discussed throughout the year will also be geared toward the, so strike out many all the way to the, and then replace that with, with the primary goal of closing the achievement gap. So I'll read that last, I'll read the sentence over. So, "The primary goal of the committee is to address issues and recommend action to the school board, which will improve student achievement for all students at all levels, with the primary goal of closing the achievement gap." That's my only correction to that.
Member Ryan.
So President Wu, I drafted this Academic Achievement Committee statement, and I am more than comfortable in taking Member Rodriguez's suggested edits.
So, can I ask one of you to forward that to me so I can review that? No, with the corrections. Superintendent.
Yeah, no, I really liked, you know, the enthusiasm behind the committee's recommendations and the work, and I just, you know, there's no doubt that having a board use committees as governance tools to support the work that's going on in this district is important. As we go through and start to really build the objectives and what it is that they're trying to accomplish, you know, just want to remind the board that, you know, the planning part is great to help set direction, and the monitoring, which equals the accountability piece, is also really key. I think there's also, be mindful that it can go too far, and that sometimes it could, might create, you know, big stress on staff time. Like I see the Communication Committee recommendations to meet every week and report every month, and I don't know how that would work out, you know, can we pull people together every week? Is that the right type of format? So I think there's still some discussion around actual structure, how often, what's the goals, and, but as far as helping the board gain new knowledge through the committee work and setting some direction for us and monitoring, I think I'm all for that. I think that the board also has to trust, myself, the superintendent, has to trust the team to be able to put together the structures for what we're going to do with this work and moving forward, much like what's going to happen with the strategic plan. Everyone will get to weigh in on that, but at the end of the day, we'll take those recommendations and create the plan based on the input that best serves our district and our students.
Thank you, Superintendent. So, Member Rodriguez.
Thank you again, President Wu. I just, I'm finding it difficult to find some words here. I think that there's none other than who's more stretched in their schedule than a board member. I think all of us up here have full-time jobs, or used to have full-time jobs, and I think that, you know, if I read this committee structure correctly for the communications, it's to initially meet weekly. It doesn't mean that it's going to be consistently meeting weekly. So I also feel that when the board puts forth a recommendation, that's, it's good to hear about staff and time, but it's also good to hear from the board and how we balance that out, and how we come to some kind of middle ground. So I would like to hear more from colleagues. I think this committee sounded interesting to me, but I do have to pick and choose which committees I want to be on. Technology would probably be one of my fortes, I'd like it. But I also don't want to dilute what the intent of this board member was who created this committee structure, to say that they were initially meet weekly, and it wouldn't be a long-going, ongoing task like that.
Thank you, Member Rodriguez. So this is a conference item. I'll be working with the superintendent, having taken all these comments, and trying to make a recommendation based on the comments that we've heard today as we move forward, and then we'll appoint. Vice President Hanson, you had your...
Yeah, I was just, you really, I think you answered my question. I just wondered what the process was going forward, and then there, so they'll be brought back to us, and we'll have an opportunity to discuss them.
Now, one thing I wasn't going to do today was, because this is a conference item only, but I'm going to announce, and we'll have it on the, when I bring, as part of the package when I bring it back, the superintendent's Evaluation Committee, which meets on an ad hoc basis chaired by Vice President Pritchett and Member Cochran, and up until August 14th, Member Rodriguez, and I was, I'm going to be appointing Member Ryan to replace Member Rodriguez who stepped down from that committee, but that'll be brought back. Barmen.
Want a final comment on the, on the board committees? So I'm also excited that we're doing this. I think it's very important.
This being what?
This, creating standing committees instead of having ad hoc committees. I think it's an important move forward for us as a board and as a district, because when we do that, the transparency level increases greatly, our ability to chronicle the work that we're doing by not having an ad hoc and making it a standing committee, there's a lot more accountability to the community. It's certainly been something that's been noted in the press, that, you know, not every local public agency, you know, around our community nor in the state operates in a fully transparent way, and I think it's critical for us to be, you know, good exemplars to the students that we're teaching and to the community that we want to be as transparent and open as possible. That's how we have the best work product that comes here. I mean, we're all volunteers up here on the board, and we rely on all of you and the community to help make us as good as we can and make the best decisions. So I think the standing committees is a real good step in the right direction. I'm very proud that the board's moving there. And I know when we have a policy, you know, governance meeting coming up, I know I'd like to also have us discuss making sure that all of our emails are also using school district email addresses and look at some of the other provisions, so everything is a public record. There's plenty of other folks that are having their own problems with emails and servers and everything else, and we should not be in the same situation as anybody else. I think that's important as we keep moving towards transparency and accountability and openness. Everything should be open to the public, and I think this is a, you know, great move in the right direction. I think we keep doing that, we keep establishing ourselves as open partners, and that's really important for all of us. Appreciate this.
Thank you, Member Hanson. Moving on to item 10.0, Business and Financial Information Reports. 10.1, Business and Financial Information Received. 10.2, Head Start Early, Head Start Reports Received. Item 11.0, September 3rd, Future Board Meetings and Locations. September 3rd, 4:30 closed session, 6:30 open session here. I will not be here, so Vice President Pritchett will be chairing the committee, but I will be representing the school district in Jinan, China. And we'll be speaking to the administrators and some of the school districts back there. And it's only a city of about 9.4 million, and my understanding that's at their school, their school district has about, including employees, about a million people, so I want to see how they handle things. September 17th, 2015, 4:30 closed session, a 6:30 open session. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I move to adjourn. Do I have a second? I have many seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.